The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
What we're going to do is we're going to call, order the meeting of the regular meeting of the Weyburn City Council held in council chambers at 6:00 PM Monday, October 24th, 2022. The first order of business is approval amendments of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting held October 11th, 2022. Do you have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, your worship.
I'll second that motion, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. Before we go forward, just make note to the minutes that Councilor Mickle is absent here tonight, but we still have a quorum. Additions to the agenda?
Thank you, your worship. There's no additions tonight from administration.
Council? None. There are no public hearings and notices, there are no delegations, proclamations, or petitions, reports to standing committees, there are none. The consent agenda, we have the fire report, do you have a motion to receive?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the fire department report for September 2022 on the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
Worship, I'll second that motion.
Questions? Call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. That can be found on the city website, or will be found on the city website. Motions, accounts payable, do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I move that purchase in the amount of $1,210,588.92 from October 7th to October 20th, 2022 be passed for payment.
I would second that, your worship.
Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. Introduction of bylaws, first the airport bylaw amendment, Director Wilkinson, please.
Yes, good evening. So, we are asking for the Airport Operation and Fees Bylaw Amendment 2022-3450 be brought for a second and third reading. So, on Tuesday, October 11th, 2022, council gave first reading to the bylaw, and since that date, no public concerns or feedback were provided to the city after this first reading, and this would be amendment to update Schedule A, which contains the fees. So, we are recommending to, it is recommended that bylaw 2022-3450, a bylaw to amend bylaw 2019-3400, the Airport Operation and Fees Bylaw, Schedule A, be given second and third readings at this meeting.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I would move that bylaw 2022-3450 to amend bylaw 2019-3400, a bylaw to regulate the use of the Weyburn Airport for the purpose of amending fees be read a second time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously.
Your worship, I would move that bylaw 2022-3450 to amend bylaw 2019-3400, a bylaw to regulate the use of the Weyburn Airport for the purpose of amending fees be read a third time and passed.
Your worship, I'll second that.
Call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. And just to make also note that there was no one in the audience here that was, wished to make a statement about it, so there was, there's no one here. Unfinished business, there is none, new business. We have our, tonight we have our budget, our draft presentations, and this is one of the first years that we're going to have all the different city budgets being presented on here, and just to, kind of a special note that is, it is to be remembered, and I've said this numerous, numerous times, that the tax rates are on here, that we raised taxes for 40%, when I started, 1980, we, the cities were the only responsible for 20% of the budget, the total city budget on the end, and the rest was the province paid for, this is, our taxes pay for 40%. Of your taxes also, it should, say you had a $3,000 tax, half of that, half of that is school tax, the other half is what the city is actually charging you, so when you look at your bill, there's where the announcement, and we've put in, provided that into, two years ago, was that not true finance, that missile, that, two years ago, we started putting letters in showing how the tax breakdown was, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's where that goes. So, this year, we're, under our city administrator, we are bringing forward all the draft budgets to present to the citizens of Weyburn in their entirety as we start. Which one would you wish to start with, Director Finance?
Okay, so, this is the preliminary report, so I just have like, a few slides to go through first. So, our municipal budget serves to outline how the money comes into the city of Weyburn, and how it's going to be spent to maintain and improve the city. This year, so, the city of Weyburn is inviting residents to engage with us on our annual budget, and we're looking for feedback on the preliminary budget that has been presented. So, the public input is open from tomorrow, October 25th, to November 18th. So, the city, we try, we need to have to have a balanced budget, so we want to maintain our tax policies to keep the city competitive with other cities within Saskatchewan, balance the rate payers' interest to have continued growth, balance departments requests to continue with high, a high level of service and programs, address the maintenance and replacement of major capital, set out our short and long-term plans, and manage the increase in supply and capital costs. So, how is the city, city's budget funded? So, the general operations of the city is funded through tax revenue and grants and some fees. Our utility functions are funded through user fees, which is like your utility bills, landfill fees, et cetera, and through capital grants. So, our general operating, what we're proposing to have for general operating revenue is property tax at 12.7 million, grant funding at 4.3, reserve funding at 2 million, fees and charges at 1.8, and investment income at 626,000, for a total of 21,582.93. Our utility fund, we are budgeting for 5.8 million in fees to come in, grant funding of 100,000, and reserve funding of 11. And within our capital funds, they will primarily come out of reserve funding and through internal loans of 3 million, and transfers from our operating to pay for that capital of 718,000. So, that's a total of 331,269. So, our property taxes make up about 59%. So, our operating and capital budget, so this is for the general services, which include finance, police, fire, planning and development, engineering, public works, leisure, and parks, that is 22 million, and our capital within that department is 883,000, for a total of So, this breaks, the little chart breaks down what each department is funded through, or what the expenses are for that cap, for this operating budget. So, our fleet, facilities, and infrastructure revitalization, these are all funded within or from the general fund, so these are not like, actual extra costs to the city because they are captured through our general fund as an expense. So, the operating of these are 3,233,000, and our capital is 385,000. And our utility and landfill, it's generally funded through our fees, and so, the utility and water treatment budget is 4.8 million, and the landfill is 1.2, with capital budgeted for 2.5 million. So, this slide shows a breakdown of how the revenue coming in, all the expenses within each department, the capital to be spent, and how the financing is going to take place to come up to a balanced budget of zero. And each department's going to go through what their costs are, and how they have fluctuated from last year. So, within their capital budget, each department has capital projects that they have laid out, and they will discuss it when they talk about their costs, so the police has 220,000, budgeted, fires 398,000, leisures 200,000, parks has 20,000, engineering 20,000, and public works at 25,000, for a total of 883,000. All right, so to start is administration, and Matthew is going to highlight on it.
Yeah, thanks, Laura, and thanks council for the opportunity to provide budget to you guys tonight. So, I'll go through the administration budget, and then afterwards, I'll go through the plan and development budget as well. If you have any questions at any time, please let me know, as I go through the presentation. So, going through the min budget, just a little background, the min budget includes city council, myself, and the city clerk, human resources, communications, safety, finance, IT services, taxation and tax enforcement, what we do for the city hall building here, we provide funding to the Weyburn Humane Society, Weyburn Regional Economic Development, Weyburn Housing Authority, and the Caravan Society, and also includes our farm, farmland that we lease out. So, going through the slides, it talks about some highlights from 2022. So, the first major highlight we have is employee benefits provider reviews. Right now, we're working with Jordan Bell out of Edmonton to look at our benefits for our employees. We're hoping to have a report on us moving forward to a benefit provider later on this year, for council review. We also have implementation of site docs to assist in safety management and efficiencies. So, Abby Cravell, our safety coordinator, has really done a lot of good work in our department, trying to look at how we can make our safety operations more efficient, and it's been a really great document for just not her department, for other departments within the city. We continue to find the Weyburn Humane Society for animal control and facility operations. We have continuation of our Weyburn Builds program, which is a great program for some of our housing areas in the community, and then implementation this year of the Weyburn Builds commercial, sorry, the commercial incentive program. So, once again, we developed that this year to help our local businesses to do a lot of different things, and for us to also recruit new businesses into the community. Moving forward into, into next year, some of the things we're looking at is firstly, implementation of e-bidings, electronic bidding for procurement, so we're looking for how we do our tendering and competitive bid processes, we want to make things a little more cleaner in how we provide back out to our proponents, and how we operate internally for that as well. We want to look at and improve emphasis on community engagement. So, big thing we've been talking about through strategic planning is for us to have a better voice and a better way of receiving voice back from our community members. So, community engagement is a very important thing to do that moving forward. Next thing I have here is the implementation of records management, so we're looking at getting a scanner in place. For us, we have many files, and how we're currently doing records management isn't efficient, so we want to do initial phase of us starting to look at doing better record management for all of our departments within the city. And then, lastly, is continuation of the Weyburn Builds program, and also the commercial incentive program. Again, very important for us to recognize both residential and commercial properties. Move forward, Laura, I'll talk about the highlights for finance. So, for finance in 2022 highlights, so we did a lot of work with WBM, who's our IT providers, for firewall and system upgrades, to really improve our information technology. We're quite behind, so we had to make some significant changes to what we're doing within that. Also, for us, we've had reduction in paper use, which has really helped our administration costs. A lot of things happened because of COVID, right? We changed a lot of our operations, we learned a lot of utility billing online, stuff like that, really created some really good efficiencies for us moving forward. And then, lastly, is, we just signed a five-year external audit service agreement with Grant Thornton, and that just was approved at our last council meeting, so really excited to work with them again for the next five years, moving forward. For us, initiatives, we're not doing a whole pile of different things through the finance department next year, we want to continue to reduce our use of paper. So, one things we want to implement is online payments, we want to look at an online platform to make it a little easier for people to pay for services. Right now, we mostly do online payments for our leisure and our parks process, we don't really do that for any other department, so we know we've been working through finance and through our communications coordinator to maybe implement a better program to have online platform for that moving forward. So, for the initiatives, not really a whole pile has changed within our administration budget. One thing I will note, you'll see a reduction on council, city council has a side in 2023 not to receive the cost of living, so their wages will stay status quo from this year into next year. Also, we have no oil show next year, we usually put a budget amount to help support that event, so we're not budgeting that for next year. We have an increase in IT services, we have more costs coming from WBM for some of the changes we made last year into, into what we're going to do into 2023, and you're going to hear this over and over from us, we have increased utility costs, we're seeing energy and power costs going up, so there's slight increase on what we're going to do for our facility. At that, I'll open up, there's any questions from council for city administration?
I guess my only question I have is on this increase on your fuel, power, and energy, have you done any much, how much of a buffer have, with anticipated costs rise?
Yeah.
10%, 15%?
Well, we don't, we tend not to do a 10% buffer, so what we do for things like SAS Power and SAS Energy, we look what the province provides as a percentage, they've already went through their rate discussions, they've already provided the information off, so we base it on what rates are provided that way. In regards to fuel, right now, I think when, when Jen goes through her fleet, she'll go through and explain that we're going to have a significant increase because we're seeing a significant increase this year, right? I don't know the number, and Jen will talk about that when she does talk about fleet, but we have seen a significant jump in both diesel and our fuel, like, it's just been an increase that way, and you will see that when we do our budget discussion about fleet.
And that's why I'm just saying is that the buffer, and there even, even the province saying that they've already done, you hear other reports saying that they could go even more because of lots of things, maybe Saskatchewan's going to hold the line, but I just want to make sure that we're not under budgeting for this stuff that we're.
Yeah, your worship, I feel the budget we provide, we're not under budgeting, the one thing we have to watch out for is not to over budget either, this is an extremely tight budget, so we have to watch that. I know that when I do talk about leisure and our facilities, there's been a lot of work done by the department looking at what our provincial crowns are doing, and what they're showing for some of those costs, but we are sure to see increases, we know that, through the inflationary costs, we know that's going to happen that way.
Right. Mr. Richard?
Thanks, your worship. Thanks, Matthew, for starting this off. I have a few questions, and I'll kind of go through them, and I'll try to keep them to admit, and then break the questions out as you go through the departments. The first one I had was the Weyburn Builds tax concessions, you budgeted that at $4,000 for the next year, is that right? Do I understand that?
No, it's, it's actually based at eight, I didn't change the amount. It's the exact same amount as before, so what we do is we do a three-year average, we look at what's coming through, we're not seeing a whole significant number of, of applications that's changed that amount, we're averaging on every year between the seven to about 9,000 every year, we're not seeing a big change on the number of people going into that program. Through our engagement work, and some of the work we want to do moving forward, we want to actually promote that and our commercial incentive program, to get a little more usage into both those programs, because I really think it's the significant programs to help those opportunities.
So, that's listed as an expense, not because we have to write a check, but we don't collect the tax.
That's correct.
Okay. If I can keep going?
Yep.
Thanks. I guess, I think you're going to answer a couple of these later on, but the one I want to stop on is on page six of my presentation, not of Laura's presentation, but whatever was sent out to us, the contract around IT with WBM, that is a, and I don't, obviously, I'm not going to even pretend to understand what it is they do for us, but it's up $28,000 this year over last year, and if I remember correctly, they think the police have a similar, you used that WBM as well, correct? Yeah. So, I guess I want to make sure, are we, are we shopping this around, because this is getting to be, and I make no commentary about WBM or their service, I'm sure they're great, but are we shopping this around to make sure we're getting the best value for the buck, because, you know, we're into the, I think about $150,000 just in administration, plus whatever Jamie's got some in his budget too, so can you help me understand how we're ensuring that we're handling that well?
Yeah, so I'll let Laura answer that question, so Laura is both the finance director and she also wears our IT hat, so let her go through some of the costs, and I can also then also talk about maybe steps in forward with that contract, so I'll let Laura start with that.
Okay, so some of our increased costs on that are due to our, we moved over to Microsoft 365, so then now we get charged based on a per user, per month fee, and there's increased like, security on that. And then, also, we had to upgrade our, upgrade our firewall, so we've gone to a, like a rental, firewall rental, I guess, instead of having a huge cost, or it's a lease, I guess, so instead of having a huge cost upfront to have a lease for three years to update our firewalls, because they were not compatible and out of date, we had some that were over 10 years old, and we were worried we were not secure enough, so that was, that's an extra cost.
So, so this new 28,000, this isn't a one-time bump, this is structural, this is here for good?
Yep.
Okay, okay, so as far as that contract goes, or we, yeah, thank you.
And I'll answer that, sorry, council, so I will answer to that, for us, we should be doing our due diligence, looking into contracts, that's something that Laura and I have discussed, we've been using WBM for a number of years, since we moved away from dedicated IT service inside our city, and we've been reaching out to some of our municipalities to see what they use, and for us to potentially go into a process of maybe tendering out to look for a new provider. That wouldn't happen this year, we have so many things that are tied with them right now, that'd be something we'll be looking at in the future, moving forward.
Okay, yeah, appreciate that, thank you, because it is a high number, a high increase, I guess I should say. That's, I'll stop there, thanks, your worship.
Mr. Jenke?
I may. I'm Matthew.
In regards to the fleet fund, I'm noticing a substantial decrease on that, can you tell us what that's about?
The fleet fund for administration?
Yeah.
A vehicle was transferred out of ours over to another department, so you'll see that, as we go through, always within budget, we have to look at efficiencies and where it really should be budgeted properly, you'll see in my next presentation for planning development, where I actually have the same kind of thing, we actually transferred one of our vehicles out of our fleet into actually leisure, we actually, actually used to have two SUVs, and one of those SUVs actually got moved over to the Spark Center, so instead of them purchasing SUV for that, we just moved that transfer into another department.
Understood, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Matthew Corrigan? No? Laura? No? Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
I'll keep on going, your worship, so I'll talk about planning development, you'll be here and watching me tonight, so, planning development department includes our billing official, our planning development coordinator, we have professional fees, which includes a chief billing official class three, so we actually contract through PBI for that, and we also have a development appeals board within that as well. So, initiatives, one, we have a new development appeals board, so Western Municipal Consulting Limited does that, a customer used to do our work for us, and they no longer provide that service, so a number of the municipalities moved into a new service that way, so that's one of our big highlights for 2022. For 2023, which will show the major difference within this budget, will be the offset development levy. So, for us, it's been a number of years since we didn't complete the offset development levy, so last time that was done was in March of 2013, we're past that eight to 10-year point, this is the time where our council has to do that review. It's really significant that council does that review moving forward, it helps us do planning, it helps us do budgeting, helps us provide ourselves as a municipality, it's really something significant that we've been really pushing off for a number of years, but I really would highly suggest that we do that work next year. So, Laura, if you can, can you move over to the next file or next slide for me? So, Council Jenke, this goes back to what you just mentioned to me about changes in wages, you'll see a significant change in wages for this department, what we did is we have an engineering and planning admin coordinator, who actually provides services both to the planning and development department and engineering department. I looked at the budget, and really, the, the lead role for that position reports back to our director of engineering, so we just made a simple move just over in budget, so when, when Jen does her engineering budget, she'll have the same speech the other way, where it's just increased that way, it's no change at all. Also talked about the offset development levy, that's a big thing for us moving forward, again, 10 years since we've done that work. Last thing you'll see is we have high professional and contractual services, that's because of us applying for the new hospital, we have to contract PBI to do work, so they do contract services for that, but we recoup the cost for that, so it's a cost recovery, we don't lose on that, that's something that they provide services moving forward that way. I'll open up to any questions about planning development.
Mr. Richard?
Thanks, your worship. Sorry, Matthew, can you make sure I understand what you said correctly, the contractor expense comes back in a revenue up top?
Yep.
Okay, so that, what I see online, I count, it's super small now.
It's 120,000, 120,000.
Yeah, okay, so that's mostly PBI?
It's majority PBI, it's all, it's actually all PBI, we actually, we have some expenses on top that we have to pay, but for the hospital service, that's actually a pay that they have to pay for that service, because it's a contracted service, because we do not have a class three billing official within our operations.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, move forward.
Yes, thank you. Up next is the engineering budget. So, for 2022 highlights, we did some paving and crack sealing on primary and secondary runways and taxiways at the Weyburn Airport, so we put a lot of investment into maintenance work at the airport, as well as a lot of our consultant fees this year were spent on engineered traffic plans for road closures to improve safety. We've been doing a little more of that because we have noticed some safety concerns in recent, recent months with just people ignoring traffic signs and stuff, so we've actually got engineered traffic plans to ensure that we have all proper signage and barricades to ensure the safety of our employees. For 2023 initiatives, we once again are going to do some work at the Weyburn Airport, so we're going to do some asphalt rehabilitation at the entry and near the lounge, so the lounge is, that area is where you'll see planes parked temporarily if they've just come in, and it also is where Stars lands, so we're going to do a little rehabilitation in that area. And then, within the consulting fees, we're going to do some asphalt samples and engineered designs for road repairs on primary and secondary roadways, so this will alleviate the surprises, so we can get a better understanding of what the base is like, and what it would actually be to fully rehabilitate that road, so we're going to spend a little more upfront cost so we can better understand our road repairs. So, on the next slide, as Matthew mentioned, you're going to see that increase in wages and benefits, and that's just a transfer of one employee from another. We do see a decrease overall in our budget, and that would be mainly due to the airport, the program last year was a $200,000 program, this year we're looking at a $50,000 program at airport investment, so that's the biggest change there, you're seeing a little bit of that changes, just mainly the airport asphalt program.
The $50,000 at the airport, does that include the grant, because usually there's a 50/50 grant on that, is that included, or is that just our, that $50,000 is our portion?
That $50,000 is the budget overall, because we can't guarantee we would get the grant in 2023, we budget the total cost project, and then if we do get the grant, in the end, that would come in on the backend, but we can't budget in the grant because it's not a guarantee.
Anything else? And we're still going forward with, in the engineering part, there's, we're still going forward with the sidewalk ramps, or is that a total different?
That's a different department, so engineering is just basically the, the engineering consulting inside from an administrative perspective and the airport, that, a lot of that comes into what is the local improvements budget, as well as the public works budget, so those will be coming up.
Public Works is coming up.
Public Works is coming up, engineering's just that tiny little piece there at the.
No, it's this one, okay, there we go.
Okay, Public Works is next. So, some 2022 highlights, so one is the completion of the traffic light replacement at Second Street and Suris Avenue, and this is a highlight for 2022, is actually there's going to be a light replacement at Government Road and Highway 39, so that will, is getting done in the 2022 year, we've just got approval for the permit there to close the highway down to complete that, so that is another one, big project within the Public Works Department, and then a continued investment into road and sidewalk repairs, and that's been a big focus for us this year, especially having the new asphalt, the pothole patch truck, and just kind of making sure that we're utilizing all the funds within Public Works to, to upgrade our road and sidewalks. 2023 initiatives, so we are looking at a traffic light replacement at Government Road and First Avenue, that would be the next one to be done. We're also looking at an intersection rehabilitation of First Avenue and 16th Street, so with that one, it will be milling it down, rebuilding the base back up, and repaving that intersection. And then, one of the, probably the biggest project is the storm sewer replacement on 16th Avenue from Railway to Cotto Avenue, so that's a significant project we would be looking at. So that's a significant project we would be looking at in 2023 because we do have some significant drainage issues in that area. So once again, you know, you're seeing high costs on utilities. I think the biggest thing for us is that storm replacement. That is a $365,000 project to do that. So that's where you're going to see the biggest increase on Public Works. And most of the other costs are a lot of just due to inflation. Like there's an extra $5,000 on PED ramps to do them. So that is just based on inflationary costs to do the same number that we did this year. We're expecting it would be additional 5,000 next year to be able to do the same amount of pedestrian ramps. So that's mainly it's inflation and then the $365,000 for the storm sewer replacement.
I'll start it off by saying, the, that 16th Street and First Avenue, that's an interprovincial highway, and the lights here are interprovincial highway. Are we getting money from the government for those things?
So we...
Or connector roads, I should say, interprovincial connector?
We have, we have applied to get them on what would be the roadway, not the lights. So...
For anything on lights?
No. So we have applied basically for the roadwork at 16th and First Avenue. And that's a 70-30 agreement. So if that's the case, we would get 70% of the cost covered by the provincial government.
Go ahead. Thanks, your worship, Jen. I have a couple of questions that I just, I think because the budget is going to be tight this year, I ask that you have a look at some items, and I know that's not easy. We have a lot of, this is just fun to say, we have a lot of dam work to do this year to the tune of about 600,000. Is, I think, right? Am I reading that right? You give me that face like I've read that wrong.
Are you, no, on what specific, on the dam?
Yeah, that's, I literally meant.
Okay, so that's under, that's under utilities. Do you want to go through that now? Or do you want me to go through the dam repairs now? Is that's underwater treatment plant?
I guess we'll wait for utilities.
Okay.
The last one, or the other one that I had for you is we have, you have a $100,000 consulting fee for the Public Works yard.
Yes, so...
Can you help me understand what's happening there?
Yep, so in 2021, we did a phase one environmental site assessment, and that was a result of, when we built the fleet storage building, it was the historical impact of when we built that, with the soil we dug out was contaminated. So we had to do a phase one environmental assessment. As soon as you get flagged for a phase one environmental assessment, the Ministry of Environment requires you to do a phase two assessment. So we did phase one in 2021. We're now required to do phase two, and it's basically to look at the impact of the site. And so there would be soil testing from the concerned areas from phase, that we determined in phase one, we do soil testing and monitoring wells. Basically, you're trying to figure out the size of the contamination and also to determine if the contamination is moving on you off-site. So this is why a phase two is required. It's a Ministry of Environment requirement, and it was flagged during the building of the fleet storage building.
And do they put a timeframe around that? You have 18 months to complete it, or?
Basically, if you don't put a timeframe in, and we already asked for lenience last year to not do it, if you don't start putting timeframes in, they will come in, set the timeframe for you, they will basically mandate you to pay it and, and do it. So you are in a lot better position if you proactively put the plan in place and say, we put budget aside, we've gone ahead, we are doing the phase two, than to have them step in and mandate you to do it.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else, Mr. Jenke?
One more question about traffic lights.
Yes.
When you say that we have applied, we've applied to SGI or the highway department of the Bronx?
So we have applied to what is the UHCP agreement. So they have a funding, you put in your high priority projects, and they have an agreement on it. They have nothing on traffic lights. Traffic lights are not covered under the UHCP agreement. It's more of the roadway and the rebuilding, the cleaning, the line painting, different things like that. We would have to look at, so there is an SGI, well, sorry, it's, it's managed by SGI, but it is a government Saskatchewan funded program that we've applied for, like our flashing crosswalks and stuff. But these are mainly a maintenance issue, whereas they're addressing a safety issue. So for us, our traffic lights are a maintenance issue in the sense that the wiring is going underground, we need to replace the wiring. So they're, that's not necessarily addressed under their funding applications.
Okay, and just for clarity, because we've passed that slide, was that at the intersection of Government Road and First Avenue?
The one for this year, or coming for 2023?
For 2023, yes.
For 2023, yes, that would be by the 7-Eleven there. That would be Government Road and First Avenue, yeah.
Thank you.
No further questions? Move forward.
Okay, now we're going to talk about fleet. So just to give you, oh, I can go through this one. So 2022 highlights, purchase of our new pothole patch truck. So that was, we've had that in service now. So that was originally a 2021 budget, but we didn't receive it till 2022. So that was a carryover, so we have the pothole patch truck in commission now. So it has been working steadily throughout the year. We had the replacement of the mechanic maintenance truck, and then we had an upgraded replacement of the tool cat and accessories for the parks department. So they actually replaced some tractors, and this is a lot more efficient. So in 2023, purchase that we are looking at is purchase of a new crack sealer unit. So we actually did some demos with one this year. We had them come down and actually demo one for us. And this would allow us to do our crack sealing with our own staff internally, and we would not have to contract it out. The parks department is looking at acquiring an additional wide area mower with the expansion of amount of grass spaces within the city. They're, need an additional wide area mower. We're looking at a replacement of the water sewer maintenance truck. So this is a truck that is out on the daily, and it is needing some significant repairs. So we're looking at a replacement of that. And then we're looking at an upgrade for the fire wire land response vehicle. So they're looking at getting an older vehicle, but they need some accessories put on to make it so they can take it out to a fire, so the lights and everything, so. So within the fleet department, I think you'll see a decrease essentially in the whole department overall because we are not looking to buy as much equipment as we did last year. We have decreased on the equipment side. To let you know, for gas, we are looking at a 53.7% increase, and diesel is a 56% increase on, from 2022 to 2023 numbers. So there is a 50% increase essentially on it. And that's, there's oil, propane, all of them are seeing even higher increases than that. So there is a significant increase just on fuel alone.
Ouch, ouch, I know. Just, everything just is ouch, and we just, it's just going to keep, plus whatever costs of inflation of supply. And our, and our supply chain owes out for that. I know that's not budgetary, but I mean, that plays on our budget too because if we can't get it now, and we're sitting waiting and things are escalating in price by the time?
We're definitely seeing that still. It kind of depends on the piece of equipment. If you can find the right piece and, and they have it in stock, you, you can get it right away. We saw that with a front-end loader we bought this year. But we're still waiting on some of our half-ton trucks that we basically ordered last year at this time. So it, it's improving, I would say it's improving, that we're seeing some improvements on some vehicles, but for a regular half-ton, no. So.
Mr. Van Betchu?
The fleet budget is kind of an obscure budget, it's a little different in that it affects on all the other departments' budgets. So if you have a vehicle from fleet, how does that reflect it in other budgets?
So essentially what happens is, so every time somebody gets a vehicle, they, they then pay into the fleet fund to cover that. So to give you an example of just say a regular half-ton truck or an SUV or something, that department pays about $900 a month for that vehicle. It goes into the fleet fund, and then that covers the ability for them to get gas, the oil changes, pays for mechanics, in-house, any repairs like that. It'll cover tight, new tires if a tire goes on it and stuff. And then that fleet fund kind of, in the, in the past few years, we've depleted it significantly. So there isn't as much to buy the capital purchases, and that's why we've cut back this year is on the capital purchases because there's not that big reserve to pull from anymore. And I would say that's something in future years, we're probably going to have to look at that fund and how, how it is done because the, the reserve in it is decreasing just because we do have an aging fleet and it's, you're trying to fit it for all departments.
So that being the case, if the fund was deflated, then we'd probably end up into internal loans or something?
Essentially, yeah. You would be looking at internal loans for each department.
And the fire truck is a, is a part, the gas fire truck is a part of this fleet purchases this year? Or proposed?
Yeah, so they're looking at using a regular truck, those accessories, that's why. And we, the mechanics can maintain it, but then I think the fire department's going to talk about their fleet a little differently because anything that is specialized as a fire truck, that our fleet fund doesn't touch. The fire department covers that.
No, but you did ask about this truck, and then they can main, switch it over? Is that, was I correct in hearing that?
Oh, yeah, because that's just, that's just our old mechanics truck that they're going to use for wildland fires.
Okay, that's what I'm just saying. But that'll go against their budget totally?
Yep.
How so much of payment on their budget?
Yeah, just the accessories is coming out of fleet because we would manage it.
Okay. No further questions, then move forward.
Okay, still me. Landfill. So in 2022 highlights, we have an expanded groundwater monitoring well network. So this was a project where we actually drilled additional wells to expand our ground monitoring. This was actually part of our permit and a requirement of Ministry of Environment. The relocation of the transmission power lines, we've been having some construction meetings with them to kick off that, and that will be happening in the end of November, beginning of December, that project will be completed. And that basically will take the power line completely out of the landfill and give us access to that whole space now. And then another big thing that operates kind of under the landfill is the change in recycling contract. And this was essentially our way of remaining fiscally responsible by choosing a contract that did not see a lot of increases for the next five years. For 2023 initiatives, we're looking at a detailed design of a phase one engineered cell. So that is a condition, again, of our landfill permit. They have only given us a two-year permit within this time, and that's to address this engineered cell, to ensure that we are operating out of an engineered cell at the landfill. And then we're also looking at a mobile litter fence to contain the working area and manage blowing litter. So essentially, this fence would be set up to the location of where they are dumping that day, and this fence will contain it within there, and it should reduce a lot of the litter from hitting the outside fence and into the fields and stuff. So it's just a, and it's movable, so they just pick it up with forks and they move it to the working area each day. And it's just a very, this was, once again, a permit requirement to look at a better way to control our blowing litter within the landfill.
Question? And again, are litter fees make, make up a lot of this money?
Yeah, so we're not seeing a drastic increase within the landfill costs. I mean, a lot of it is just, again, utilities and, and those small projects, like our projects are a lot smaller this year than they, or sorry, are for next year than they are this year. But yeah, there's not a lot of change within our landfill.
Okay, very good. Move forward.
Okay, so now we're going to chat about the utilities department. So for 2022 highlights, we kicked off the construction of Lift Station 3. I think if you drive by, you can obviously see there's a lot of work going on right now. So they just actually poured the walls of the building, so that's all hoarded in. So that was the kickoff of the construction. We did a water main replacement on 12th Street from Suris Avenue to East Avenue, and we greatly appreciate the patience of the residents on that street. With the high water table, that project did take a little longer than planned, but they do have a brand-new water main there. And then another one was the lagoon dredging, which had been a project that had been pushed forward into 2022. So we did get the lagoon dredged, and they did take in a significant amount of solids out of there. So in 2023 initiatives, we're going to have the completion of Lift Station 3. So that will carry over into the 2023. So we're looking forward to getting that project done in 2023. We're looking at some storm and wastewater upgrades for flood mitigation. So we're currently doing the study for that right now. With the storm events that we saw in May and June this year, this obviously brought this to the forefront that we need to do some upgrades there. We are looking at a water main replacement on Railway Avenue from 6th Street to 8th Street. And then we are doing a continued investment in catch basin valve and hydrant replacements, which is something we do every year just to maintain our infrastructure. So in utilities, once again, our main, our main increase is those projects that are mentioned of the water main, and then a lot of it is that storm and wastewater upgrades for flood mitigation. That's a $750,000 project that we're looking at. So, and so that would be a lot of it. And then our water main is a little bit higher to do that section is just a little longer of a section than we've done. So it's a little higher price of a water main, it's about 400,000.
So this, one of the things that we're doing in 2023 is that a result of that engineering study that we, we did?
Yeah, so the engineering study, they've started it. They just actually did the site visit this past week, and they've already done some hydraulic modeling to look where essentially they will see bottlenecks. And so we have a bit of an idea right now, and then we will be able to have a better idea once we have that full engineering study exactly where we need to do some replacements, some upgrades, and to better manage the, the flood.
So again, the citizens can know that we are taking action against this, what had happened in, in this early spring, that we're to rectify problems that were there for the bottom.
Yeah, absolutely. It is definitely a priority for our department based on what happened in June, and that's why we wanted to do the engineering study this year is so that we could budget money for next year to look at, kind of trying to reduce any bottlenecks we have.
Anything else, Mr. Van Betchu?
Just listening to you, Jen. Good to see that we're putting a lot of money into infrastructure and roads and sewers and storm sewers and everything going forward. It's, I realize it's going to be a tight budget, and there might still be, need to be some belt tightening, but it is good to see that we're prioritizing infrastructure in the city because it's desperately needed for sure.
Yeah, and I think too with the utilities, you'll see, one of the reasons we picked Railway Avenue is we knew it was one that we'd highlighted in the local improvements plan. And based on the age, we, we knew that if we would need to replace the water main before we ever did, and, and we know some storm lines in there need to be replaced. So it was one of those things that before we paved it, we knew we needed to fix the undergrounds before we could pave it. And so it's kind of hitting projects at the same time that we can dig it up, replace the undergrounds, and then we can go back and pave it because we know that road needs significant repairs.
Go ahead.
Thanks, worship. Now, Jen, I won't make my joke about dam work again because it's not funny anymore.
Do you want me to do the water treatment plant? Because that's where the dam actually is.
Can you, can you just, yeah. Do you, did we put that off once before?
The what?
That work on the dam? Those, what are they called?
Stop logs?
Yeah.
That one specifically? I would say that we have put dam work off for a significant amount of time.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you want, I can chat a little bit about, do you want me to do the water treatment plant and I'll get into the dam? Okay. So the 2022 highlights, I'll just go through those. So construction of CO2 and ammonia systems to improve water quality and compliance with our permit. So we have issues with THM and HAAAs. Essentially, we have higher organics, we pull from Nickel Lake, they have higher organics. We have trouble meeting the requirements on the permit. So that is the 2022 highlight is we are actually doing some process improvements this year that will be fully commissioned in 2023 to help meet that. This year, we did pay for a dam inspection on Albert Douglas Dam. That inspection, we do not have a final report, but we've been given some preliminary indications of what the highest priorities are out there. And so that results in our 2022 And so that results in our 2023 initiatives is repairs on the Albert Douglas Dam as a result of the 2022 inspection. And then another one is an installation of an air exchange system of the water treatment plant. We do not actually have an air exchange system, and as you know, with water creates a lot of humidity. We're actually seeing the wear on our instrumentation that if we don't put in some kind of exchange system, we're actually going to wear our instruments out faster and have some more failures there. Now, about the Albert Douglas Dam, so there's kind of two big things there. There's the ceiling of the concrete, and basically we need to seal the concrete because we're seeing issues with the structural integrity, and we need to keep the dam. So that is, the ceiling is part of it. And then there's the stop logs and the radial gate. So we need those to safely operate the dam. Currently, only one of three gates works. So if we have a flood situation, we can actually only ever open one gate. We can't actually open all three. So if we got a massive 2011 situation again, we've got one gate that's operational. Same thing goes for the stop logs to be put in. We have one set of stop logs that is actually functional. So essentially, we had a near miss this year with the stop logs and a chain letting loose on them. And so it's one of those situations that we know it is a massive hazard, and there has not been any significant work done on the dam for a very, very long time. And the study has identified that preliminary is those are the main focuses is the gates and the stop logs, because essentially we only have one of three that actually operates on both sides. So it's kind of one of those things that if we lose that one, we actually lose the ability to control our dam.
I'd like to put a foot forward that that actually shows where, if people are not maintaining certain things and keep putting things off and cutting things, that we can get into some terrible problems on there. We have to take each year and see what is really the priority and and look at it, view it as priority and make sure that we're not into this situation. Now, it's just like, like you said, a near miss onto so many other things on there. It also like to point out that you had said there that there's so many of these, the government standards for the permits are raising, and we're getting stuck with it.
Yeah.
Because of, and that there's nothing we can do. It's not like we're want, just wanting to do this. We have to, it's a have to, it's never we didn't stop with, right?
Yeah. So.
Thank you, worship. Jen, I apologize if you've already addressed this, but I noticed that the professional and contractual services, it's an increase to 476 from 222,000. Can you explain that?
Um, okay, so I'm just going to see if I can pull the budget exactly. Contractual services, I'm going to guess a lot of it is tied to chemical in the water treatment plant. We have seen significant increases in chemical this year alone, and we're expecting more next year. So a lot of the contractual services come in through that chemical. We also do with the process improvements now have a CO, CO2 tank that we have to rent as well as purchase the CO2 to run that new process improvement. So you're going to see an increase with that new process improvement in there. There is some pieces there. Those would be your biggest pieces is primarily chemicals and lab supplies. Thank you.
Mr. Jenke?
Jennifer, if you can put my mind at ease or or the opposite, I'd rather not use my imagination on this, what is the worst-case scenario if we don't repair the dam gates or the third gate malfunctions?
I would say that our department is very good at finding ways to make things work, that we would get the proper equipment out there to pull a gate under any circumstances that would need to be, but essentially, you would be paying very high-dollar figures to get that gate out.
I appreciate that answer, but I don't like it at all. Thank you.
With this, a lot of this, this money comes back because of, or payment for our utilities that are, and that's part of the raise of our utility rates going on.
Yeah, exactly. So the utilities department also funds the water treatment plant department. So when we say utilities, the, that funds the water treatment plant as well for the both of them. And and that's why you are going to see rate increases next year and years going forward. And it's a lot just to pay for the aging infrastructure. The, when we built the new reservoirs, which were an absolute requirement, and we were lucky to have provincial and federal funding for that. When we did build the new reservoirs, it depleted a lot of our utilities fund to build those reservoirs. So now we are seeing that we don't have as much of reserve within utilities to continue on all the other aging infrastructure, but that is why you will see rate increases.
Because we most certainly don't want to get into that moose jaw thing that happened a couple of years ago where they had to raise rates almost like 20 to 50% on their stuff to?
And that's why we, you know, have done a continued program of a water main replacement every year, things like that, so we don't run into a lot of those emergency situations where we do have all of our water mains failing. And and we've kind of tried to do a good job on our asset management to make sure that we are continually upgrading infrastructure, so.
Okay. No further questions, move forward.
Okay. The infrastructure revitalization program, lots of people know this kind of as local improvements, but the new program is 100% funded by the city program. So for 2022 highlights, we paved Fourth Street South from Sixth Avenue to Tenth Avenue. We paved SAS Drive. We had the paving of the downtown back alleys and the parking lot behind Waverne Legion. Crack sealing was supposed to be happening this week. Of course, that's weather dependent, but we're doing approximately 20 kilometers of crack sealing on primary and secondary streets. We did a sidewalk replacement on the west side of Second Street North off Prairie Sky Co-op Grocery Store. That was asphalt-covered, and we dug it all out. We did sidewalk curb and gutter replacements on Barber Crescent, Burmacombe Drive, and Lang Crescent. We did a concrete ramp replacement on Third Street Northeast. We did a sidewalk replacement on Foster Street from Cotto Avenue to Bison Avenue. And we did a resurfacing of a sidewalk on Morgan Street in front of Crescent Point Place. So for 2023, we are looking to pave Fifth Street from Cotto Avenue to Prairie Avenue. That has become, I think, a higher-traffic area with the new school and Spark Center being there, so we're finding a lot more wear on that road. We're looking at sidewalk replacements on Morgan Street, Tom Hard Drive, Barber Crescent, Cotto Avenue, and Government Road. And then we're also looking to pave Railway Avenue from Sixth Street to Eighth Street, which ties in with our water main as well. But we will not just pave where we replace the water main, we'll repave that whole area. We are looking to pave Brownlee Street from Sims Avenue to First Avenue Southwest. And then a carryover from 2022 that we weren't able to get done this year is we want to pave Fourth Street South at the River Park entrance. We were unable to get that done this year because there need to replace some undergrounds on the stormlines there, so they want to replace that first in 2022, and then we will pave it in the spring of 2023. And also, we want to ensure when we do that, that it is, we reduce the amount of time we cut off the access to the River Park campground. So that's just a carryover. So that's why you'll see the 2022 budget for local improvements was 700,000. We only spent 600 of that 700,000, and that's why you'll see the 800,000 in 2023. It's because of that paving the Fourth Street South at the River Park entrance, that's actually a carryover. So that's why you are seeing $100,000 increases because of a carryover.
Questions? Seeing none, go ahead.
Thanks, worship. I'm stepping in for Director Crowe tonight, so I'll be going through the leisure presentation for you. So Leisure Department budget includes revenues and expenditures associated with leisure service departments, including our sport, culture, recreation, heritage services. The budget includes all revenues and expenditures for our programs and operations of leisure facilities, including the following. So we have the library, Creighton Spark Center, the leisure center, the spray parks, and the paddling pools, Crescent Point Place, Tom's Night Sports Arena, and then Waverne Heritage Village, School Line Historical Museum, and the Turner-Kirland Museum. So the majority of department's expenses are due to facility operations and staff expenses. Operating costs are offset by grants and user fees, emissions and emissions that were actually set back on September 1st, or we did a new three-year rate set for our leisure facilities. So going through the 2022 highlights, so we signed a 10-year agreement, a funding agreement with the RM, so much appreciated to the support that we received from the RM for our recreation services. I know there was hard work done by both groups, and it's really appreciated that we have that funding from them moving forward. Also, continued funding to Waverne Public and Regional Library towards facility operations, programings, and we do a mandatory per capita base fee for them. So library facility operations and programs through the per capita, we do $35.00 and $0.00 per capita, so it's around $470,000 to be provided back into the library. So moving into 2023 initiatives, so we're going to do more clarity on actual operational costs for Creighton Spark Center. So now we actually have a full-year service. That facility was just operational for a few months. Now we have a full-year operation of the Creighton Spark Center. We're forecasting pre-pandemic revenues generation for our facility users. So we're looking at is, for the last two years, our revenues have really changed within that department. Now we're going back to pre-pandemic levels and see really what revenue should be based on full usages. We're looking at increased partnerships with community groups to expand our programming opportunities. We have our community grant allocation, so we allocate about $75,000 a year through the Sketch and Lottery Trust Fund out to groups, and we also leave some of that funding for our operations as well. And then we're also looking at increase to operating costs due to inflation and increased utility costs. So if you move over to the next slide, you'll see some of those things that we're talking about, increased costs. So one, if you're looking at our utilities, we are looking at utility increase for all of our facilities right now. When you're looking at some of our loan payments, we have loan payments for facility projects, including roof construction over at the sports arena and also over at the museum. Also, we have payments back for the Spark Center that we start doing because it's a multi-year repayment plan for the work that we did over there. Open up any questions about leisure services?
Well? Yeah, I noticed in, so in the, at the Aquatic Center, we have a manager, and then at the Lee Spark Center, we have a manager, and now we're hiring a program manager besides that.
Yeah, it's not a new position. We had a program manager there before.
Oh, okay.
There's no, there's no, there's no new positions. That's a retitle of that position. So we have no new positions being hired within any of the leisure facilities.
Okay, yeah, it must be a new title because it doesn't show it in the previous budget.
Yeah, it's, it's a new title for the position. So what we do through HR, we do a really good job of evaluating our positions and making sure, okay, is that title really fitting what that person's doing within that position? So they actually did a review of a position over that facility and re-titled that position, but it's no new position.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, worship. Matthew, thanks for jumping in. So some of these, I mean, you'll be able to answer all these questions. $470,000 increase in revenues, that you're saying is largely due to increased usage, not increased rates?
A little bit of both. So we do have increased rates. So we did a new three-year rate base that was approved and started September 1st. So that's, that's a little bit of that. Another thing is a full-year usage of the Creighton Spark Center. We never budgeted a full-year usage for that. Another thing is what I talked about is moving back to higher usage. We're seeing more user groups coming back to our facilities. We're seeing more rental groups coming from outside of the community as well to use all of our facilities, not just the Creighton Spark Center, but also the, the two arenas and also the pool. We're starting to see a lot more of that, and it's changed because of the pandemic moving to the next step of that process.
Okay, a couple more if I may?
Sure.
Thank you. There is a, a significant increase in the leisure center concession supplies, and that might be unfair to ask you off the cuff, but?
It's not. So it's actually an increase in revenue as well. So we're actually seeing more products being sold from there. We're also seeing an increase that we have to do to spend to bring the product in for that. So it's actually a cost positive for us. If you look further into the budget, it will show on the revenue side that we are showing an increase on, on that. We've actually seen that, again, with the larger number of users that came through our pool this year. We had more people come through our pool this year than the previous three years. Again, even before the pandemic, we've seen that. So that's why that's happening. So it's actually a positive because more revenue is coming in as well.
Okay, and if I could have one more, just on the art gallery. I don't know what Carfac fees are, but wow, a 200% jump.
Yeah, it's because you changed your, your level of what your, your gallery is. So Carfac fees are a fee that we have to pay back to the provincial body to have us provide our shows. So we have to have a certain level for what we're bringing in for shows. So the higher quality shows, the higher Carfac fees you're going to have. So you're going to see that just because of us changing our level of our gallery to where it was when I was at Signal Art, Signal, Signal Hill Art Center, to what it is now at the, at the Spark Center. It's just your shows are a lot higher and the Carfac fees go up as well with that.
So are we seeing the, 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 the usership go up accordingly?
We, we have seen the usership, and we've seen the quality of the shows go up as well.
Quality of the shows, but are people going and appreciating the shows?
Yeah, we're seeing that as well. We're seeing an increase in that as well.
Okay.
Thanks, worship. And the one thing I will talk about Carfac fees, we can actually apply it back to a professional agency for funding for arts, right? We, we have that capability as well.
Apologies, Matthew. I really looked forward to grilling Andrew about this, but do you have, you mentioned that the pandemic effect has largely disappeared from our leisure services usage. Do you have any data on whether or not the addition of the Spark Center as a, you know, third or fourth or fifth option has kind of reached equilibrium yet?
Do you know what we can do for that, Council Jenke, is I can talk to Director Leisure Services, Leisure Services Crowe, and we can actually get a report back to show that to council. I think that'd be something that could show you based on the usage and how it's changed. Is that what you're kind of looking for?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, something I cannot provide. You, you could have grilled Andrew, and I don't know if he would have been able to provide that either, but I think that's something that really should be a discussion that happens at our Leisure Services Commission, and and some reporting that we can provide back to not only just council, but also the public on, on that usage that way.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you.
On my list, thanks.
Anybody else? Good, move forward. Parks?
Yeah. Me as well, your worship. One second, and just going to move on to the next page here. So for the parks, parks includes all expenses associated with operations and maintenance of all city-owned parks, green spaces, cemeteries, urban forest, pest control, community gardens, outdoor sport fields, and play spaces. So some of the highlights that we've seen in, in 2022 includes the East Tagua Trail Expansion and the continued recapping of our trail system. It's really important for us to make sure that we add to our system. We actually have a really good master plan for parks, but we have to make sure we continue to maintain that, and also work we're doing in to maintain our current pathways, making sure they're accessible for people within the community. Big thing as well, we just got a report back from Communities in Bloom. We got 405 Blooms ringing for our Communities in Bloom Curse Takeaway Program. It actually shows a lot of work that we're doing right now. One of the things Matthew mentioned was the new city signs we have here, the cleanliness that they're seeing within the community. It's a really positive thing that we're, we're seeing. And, you know, it's really imperative report for us to help us, not just for our department, but for what happens within engineering, public works, our work with the regional economic development tourism. It's really broad spectrum for all the things we do within that. And then we have Jubilee Park valve replacement and soccer field repairs. So moving into 2023 initiatives, so they want to continue emphasis on implementing urban forestry programs. They want to capitalize on new recreation software to achieve online site booking and payment capabilities. So right now, we really focus really on our leisure programs. We want to actually now move into the parks, so include our campground, right, to have some bookings online through that program. Site maintenance and long-term planning for the former H school site. So at last council meeting, approval was set for us to take over that site. And then we did talk about some initial work. One of the initial projects we're talking about right now is removing the fence around that space and then doing some gradual site work in 2023. We want to do within the cemetery, over in Hillcrest Cemetery, scarry garden expansion. We're looking at flashing pedestrian crosswalk located on Highway 13 at East Tagua Trail Crossing for enhanced, enhanced pedestrian safety. So what I talked about in 2022, we did work to that trail. Now we want to put flashing light. You know, we selected that area for a flash light to ensure public safety is really focused in that area because it is on a highway, and we have to make sure there's extra precautions put in place over there. We also want to look at increased visibility because it's really proven effective in our places where we put flashing lights within the community. So going into the, the budget numbers, really no significant changes. You know, we're looking at no new positions. We have acquired new park space, but we really want to do efficiencies, make sure we can do that, and understand how the budget's looking this year. And so we want to really have that focus. You know, we've, we've seen some, a little more work having to be done in places like River Park just because of, of age of our, our facilities over there and then some focus that we want to do. Also, some work we're doing Jubilee Park that way moving forward. Open up for questions?
One of the things that we are only, I think this was asked before, when you talk about the dispatching of these walkways, we're only a few, about two or three kilometers smaller than what Estevan's is, aren't we? Because people always go, wow, look at Estevan doing, but we're, we're right up with, again, equal amount of...
Yeah, Your Worship, we have a large trail system. Estevan did a major project last couple of years on their pathways, which was a big need for their community, and they received some, some federal and provincial funding for that. For us, we've always maintained a really strong pathway system. For us, it's, we have to make sure we maintain that system. We have to make sure that we, we don't forget that it's really imperative that we, we take care of that because it's, it's an active area, right? I live outside one of the, the pathway areas, and it's one of the most active places in the, in the, in the city. And, and you know, the work we did last year through, through expansion of that area, it just adds more access for people in more areas of the city they can go.
Another one thing too that we want to make sure the public knows that in comparative league too is that Estevan is receiving a lot of funding simply because of what's going on down there, from there. So there's, and we're sitting here because we're doing basically good, and Estevan's got issues, so they're receiving quite a bit more funding. I guess that's a bad thing. When you're running it really good, then we don't give them anything.
Well, I'll speak to that, Your Worship, but really for us, we do a good job of looking at grants as well, and we have active departments, really looking for, for grants. You hear Jen speak of that tonight, what Andrew does, a lot of our, our departments, we, we seek grant funding. Laura talked about this in the very top. You can't run a facility just on, on taxation, right? Fees, grants, they're all really important, and I know that, that's something that I know parks strives for and, and leisure strives for. It's a big thing for them because we, we want to make sure that it's affordable for people to take care, take part in our facilities and make sure they're maintained properly as well.
And grants are, as I said at the beginning, are huge parts, and there's certain parts that, you know, you get grants and other parts aren't, the grants aren't quite so lucrative. And then you get Estevan where their, their, things are going on with them, and so they're getting huge amounts of money as kind of like, we're sorry sort of money. So anyway, but they, go ahead. We're sorry we're shutting you down, but here's the money. I shouldn't say that about Estevan, but anyway.
Okay, moving on, I'll speak about my last part of presentation tonight under the, or under the Leisure Services Department. So it's our facilities budget. So this is funded by all departments within the city through internal transfers. The fund is managed by the Leisure Facilities Department, and they identify really needs and upgrades within each department, and it's for all city-owned properties, and it's really focused on that moving forward, what we want to do for that. So two thousand and twenty-two highlights, they finalized a three-year project, which was a rooftop unit and an air handling system replacement over at the Waverne Leisure Center, replacement two boilers located at the City of Waverne Police Building, two major floods impacting Waverne Leisure Center operations. We know what the floods happened in May and June, and I know Jen talked about a lot of the work they want to do to, to rectify some of the things we're doing, and also replacement of failing dugouts. So they did that for diamond number six over at Jubilee Park. So moving forward for two thousand and twenty-three initiatives, we're looking at one full year of operation for both the fleet storage facility, the Creighton Union Spark Center, and we're looking at realistic budgets of how the operation of, of those facilities are in a full year. We're looking at proactive investment into a new chiller for, over at the arenas, roof replacement over in sections over in the Tom Zine Sports Arena, in a section over the Suluon Historical Museum, and they're both due to roof failures, and we have some leaking issues within those roof areas. We're looking at enhancing safety for public works and the Waverne Fire Department personnel with insulation of a new diesel exhaust capture system in the truck and mechanic bays, flood mitigation systems that just stop the repeat flooding over at the Waverne Leisure Center in the mechanical and electrical rooms, replacement of the Waverne Police Building rooftop condensers to ensure comfortable working environments for the people working within that building. So overall, when we're looking at the facilities budget, we're looking at increases to facilities fund due to aging facilities and large number of high priority projects of concern for us moving forward. For us investing in city facilities will extend their life and will ensure environment, environments are available to provide high quality and safe services for the City of Waverne. Open up any questions?
Nothing? Thank you. Fire Services, Fire Chief?
Two thousand and twenty-two highlights, implementation of the rural fire and rescue agreement for the RMs surrounding the City of Waverne, increased fire protective clothing, and capital purchase included air compressor upgrade, extrication equipment, and new SDBA cylinders for the breathing air that the firefighters wear on every active fire scene. In two thousand and twenty-three, we're looking at increased fire protective clothing to upgrade and maintain our protective clothing that firefighters wear, new rapid response fire truck. This would be an all hazards, all weather, all area vehicle that could transport firefighters safely to and from any incident that we respond to within our complete response district, and an improved fire safety equipment, including thermal imaging camera and especially gas detector, which would detect ammonia and a couple other gases that nobody in the area has any capabilities of detecting. That is what we're looking at for in two thousand and twenty-three. We can see we're pretty much, pretty close to the same on everything. Our internal transfers has gone up over a hundred thousand dollars. That's where most of our increase is, besides a few other minor details in the other field.
Thank you, Worship. Chief, how long, if you were to order that fire truck, would it take to have delivery, and would we expect more expenses because it does take longer?
Once you lock in the order, the price is fixed. I talked to two different suppliers. One is telling me twelve months, the other one told me twenty-four months.
Twelve months to twenty-four months for this new rapid response?
For delivery once the SPAC and bid tender has been delivered.
Yeah, in regard to the truck, I think I need a better explanation.
Okay.
More thorough, sorry, not better. Apologize.
Oh, absolutely. For the last number of years, we have one truck that can do rural firefighting in the fields and, and wildland fires, and that is our tanker. Tanker is designed as a water shuttle. If you use your tanker for anything besides water shuttle, you're putting yourself at risk for not having water, running out of water. The other truck we have is just a one-ton truck with a two-hundred gallon skid unit in the back, and it cannot drive and pump. You have to have firefighters walking behind the truck with fifty feet of hose spraying out the fire line. So currently, we don't have the proper equipment for rural firefighting, hence the acquiring the old mechanics truck as another brush truck, which is, I mean, it's an older truck. With brush trucks, you always take high risk of severe damage out off-road. So this new truck will have four-by-four capability. It is an F-550, ton and a quarter, or ton and a half. It'll have capabilities for performing water rescue, snowmobile rescue, vehicle accidents, MVCs on the highways. It can do rapid response, initial fire attack while it's waiting for heavy trucks to arrive because it'll, it would man four people to have the capabilities to do an initial knockdown of a fire. All of our heavy trucks that do respond to the RM are governed at about sixty, sixty-five miles per hour. So the biggest safety concern with that is ninety percent of our firefighters don't have, they have limited knowledge and skills when it comes to driving a heavy truck that's forty thousand plus pounds. So when we get into wintertime with road conditions, off-road conditions, it's, it's a higher risk, a bigger challenge to get those trucks safely to the scene. If we had something that had the four-by-four capabilities, we can go down back roads. We're not too worried about heavy snowfall, icy road conditions because we have four-by-four. We can, we can use the road to our advantage. In the city, it would give us the capabilities of doing fire attack and exposure protection in back alleys, which we can't get our fire trucks down. So all around, it is, it is a, a multi-use truck. It doesn't meet NFPA standards for frontline engine, which is what we require in the truck we do have, but it would give us all the extra capabilities for performing the services in the RM that we're contracted to do, plus it would enhance our response in the city as well for certain, certain circumstances.
Okay, yeah, I guess. Thank you for that thorough explanation for sure. I guess it's something we'll discuss, but I'm looking at four hundred thousand dollars for this vehicle, give or take, and can we spend four hundred thousand dollars in something that else that we might need that might be more, of more value, more, used more often, and, you know, what I mean, like it's always measuring priorities and, you know, my fear always is, two years from now, oh, gosh, I wish we would have bought this instead because it would be of a better use than what this vehicle may be, so.
Absolutely, and I totally understand, and I agree with you. I'm just looking at, we're contracted to do services in RM. We need the equipment to properly and safely and efficiently perform those services, and right now, as we said, we don't have the, the most efficient, safe equipment for our firefighters to perform those duties.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Questions? Questions? Seeing none, thank you, Fire Chief. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Police Services, Chief?
Just looking at last year's twenty-two highlights, I mean, we added a K9 position, the K9 handler. We also included some additional members for our joint tactical support team that is in combination with Estevan as well. So that team with five Waverne members as well as five Estevan members are now in place. We had an additional new Tahoe for CTSS and the New Look Deckel, although that was for twenty-two highlights, I believe that was paid in twenty-one's budget, I'm thinking, so. Leadership training, I think when we looked at that, we completed that for all our supervisors, so all our new members that were corporals, they all got their supervisor training along with some additional individuals on our ranks, myself, deputy chief, our office manager, all were able to get some leadership training. The twenty-three initiatives, twenty-three business plan implementation, we also have the training and development for specialized positions, our JTSD, our traffic units, as well as our ident units. Those are all high priorities for us, again, coming up there in two thousand and twenty-three, and of course, our health and safety under our business plan with respect to our members, making sure that they have the proper equipment, proper training, and so that's what we're looking at. So based on the general operating expense of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars increase from last year, I'm going to break it down for you, sort of explain where those come from. Look at wages and benefits. So wages themselves, a hundred and nineteen thousand dollar increase, and that's a CBA. It was collective bargaining back two years ago that accounts for about twenty-two percent of the increase. When I look at the benefits for the increase, benefits make up about a hundred and five thousand nine hundred of our ask, which work out to about twenty percent of our increase for the expenses. Capital items, when we look at the capital items themselves, capital items themselves come in at roughly, give or take, two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. When we look at that, that's about forty-nine percent of our ask for that increase. So I know there's some items that are on there that we looked at. Those capital items we're looking at are, are the new vehicle itself for SGI, and it's funded, it's coming out of our reserves. We also have the NG nine-eleven system that we're looking to replace, but that isn't required to be into service until two thousand and twenty-five. Latest, two thousand and twenty-four is when we'd like to be up running. Two thousand and twenty-five is the drop dead. You have to be in place by this time. And of course, tasers, we've got some sixty thousand dollars set aside for tasers. Again, the tasers, they're at their life, sort of end-of-life expectancy. All the other agencies out there are going to the new tasers. We do have a supply from them to be able to sort of support ourselves for the next two or three years. So council, if they're looking at the budget and looking at if it is a fairly tight budget this year and you're looking at some cuts, we certainly would be able to bring that back to the board, and we've had those conversations where there's a couple of items that we could look at to sort of shore things up a little bit from our end. We're certainly looking to open that up for conversation. Roughly, capital items make up two hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred of our ask, which is, again, forty-nine percent is significant. And then when we move on, we look at our operational items. There's a roughly fifty-four thousand dollar increase in operational items that work out to about nine percent of our ask for the five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar increase. You know, a lot of those are looking at things like training itself. We're looking at increasing that clothing and safety gear like everyone else between, you know, the cost of living and everything that's gone up and the cost of material supplies and delivery, we sort of add a little bit to that as well. Consultants was a big jump a little bit. We went up ten thousand dollars there. We now have to pay for some of our forensic examinations from our friends, the RCMP. They're no longer doing it for free, so if we end up with a drug raid and we end up with three phones, we have to pay for those phones to be cracked, to get looked at. We also have to have them look at our computers. Should we have something to do with child pornography or anything like that? They're, they're charging us for every little thing that we do. If we have a subject matter expert report that we need to be done on drugs, if we see something, in order to charge somebody with trafficking, we have to have a report done for the courts, and at this point, we don't have a drug expert, so we would have to consult that out, and drug expert reports are roughly twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars. So that's one of those issues that we have to look for, so that's why we sort of increase in that area. Overall, when you look at what we have, again, forty-nine percent for capital items, nine percent for operational, twenty-two percent wages, and twenty percent for the benefits. Barring the others, any questions? That's my presentation.
Questions? Go ahead. Mal?
It's easy, thanks, Worship. Jamie, I just encourage you to work with Matthew on taming those WBM costs if you can. I mean, yours is, at least it's only a couple thousand bucks, but it's a couple thousand bucks on top of fifty grand rates.
And they have different levels of, and so we didn't even offer their, a level that they suggested because it's just getting out of control, so I agree, have to look around.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, Jamie. Thanks for that very thorough explanation, and just a couple comments. You mentioned the NG nine-eleven and the tasers, and as you said, as a board member, I think we'll probably look at maybe if we can put some money in reserves and delay the actual purchase until we get some fixed cost.
Yeah, we have a few years in order to get there, so yeah, a hundred percent.
Just on this, on the staffing and the, and the wages, I like to, like you said, wages are wages, you know, the cost of the CB, the collective bargaining agreement and everything, but I think one thing that we benefit from in Waverne that we suffer, that causes us to suffer in our budget is that we have very experienced officers that have stayed in, in the City of Waverne to, to operate in the service, and because they stay for a longer period of time, they're experienced, you know, their wages go up, but it also gives us a benefit having experienced officers that are coming to your door, and there's a huge benefit to that, to having so much experience in our force. So, you know, we do pay a higher price for that, but it's, it's well worth it in the long run.
You know, and I appreciate those comments because, I mean, you know, over the last two or three or four, I'm not sure how many recruit classes that I've gone through, but we haven't had to put somebody through because our members are sticking around, and you look at the senior officers that are roughly twenty, twenty-two years on, we still got another five years before somebody actually retires or leaves, unless somebody decides to move somewhere else, but we do have that issue where members are not only getting the CBA raises, but they're also looking at doing their steps up, and they're going for fourth, second, third, and making their way up, and that does come with an increase. One of the hard problems with the police service is that we aren't a fee-for-service. I mean, we could be, but we, we aren't, and so, I mean, it's difficult because we don't have a lot of fees coming in to be able to counter off some of the costs that we have associated with our expense accounts, so.
Yeah.
We certainly appreciate that.
As a board member, I'm sure we'll get directed to, to trim as much as we can, and we will do the, the best job we can to, to get the budget down to where it's, you know, where we can swallow it at least, but there is a cost to the service for sure.
In talking with other, just on this fees for service on there, and talking with the other mayors on that, I'll take a swipe at our Saskatchewan government. When this legalization of marijuana came in, we were supposed to get fifty percent of all revenues that were collected, and not one city has seen one cent of that. The, and that would, that would go right to the police budget. Not one cent has been there, and we were supposed to get that, and that was told, and we don't get one cent of that. And there's, and these, these pot shops have been, have been going for how long? And that would offset budgets and all that type of stuff, so there's, there's a little bit of, and again, as the mayor's caucus, we sit, and as Matthew and Tess, we talk about that. as Matthew and Tess, we talk about that, and they sue my lobbies and they just go, we just don't know where, whether we're going to balance our books or not on it. And it's just like, it's four years. Where's the money? And that's the problem, is that where's the money? I don't know on that. We'll have to send our financial person after them or something. I don't know where the money is. But that's, that's the problem, too, is that we have no fear. We keep going up on our costs, and what we want, like you said, the RCMP are charging us, yet we have nothing coming back. Go ahead, Jamie.
Chief, I always appreciate all the detail in your report. Two questions about NextGen 911, if you can answer them for me. First, this is a provincial and/or national initiative that we have to be on board by 2025, is that correct?
It is a national initiative that in 2025, the light switch goes off on the old and goes on in the new, and if you're not up and running, you don't have 911 dispatch capabilities.
All right. Over and above that obvious hard deadline, is there any public safety benefit to go into the new system?
Well, there's going to be definitely a benefit to it. I mean, what happens with the new NG 911? The old system was the telephone comes in, you get the 911 call, you can call back and trace it if you have to. The new system's going to be all digitally enhanced, all the different platforms out there for social media, your iPads, your iPhones. You watch something happen, you can automatically download it and send it over to the dispatch center. They're going to be able to capture that and get that out to the cars. So what's going to happen is we're not a PSAP. I'm not sure what PSAP stands for, Police Systems. It's a dispatch center. So Prince Albert right now is our dispatch center for 911, and so when they obtain the call, it comes down to our comm center girl sitting at the front, and they'll dispatch directly to the cars. So we're trying to figure out a way to be able to get that system in place where we're not going to be a PSAP. So Prince Albert has all the platforms, all the computer hardware, but we're going to have to upgrade our hardware and our platforms on our side. We're not sure what the cost of that is. We've been told, give or take, put around $60,000 away. That's not a hard number. We don't know if it's less, we don't know if it's more. So we're making a trip. Estevan's in the same boat, Most Java's in the same boat. We're all going to go up to Prince Albert, and we're going to talk to the individual up there under the Saskatchewan Police Safety. Help me out.
Marlowe.
Yeah, Marlowe's little crew. And so what we're going to do is we're going to find out from them what they can offer to us, and then sort of get some sort of idea from SASTEL what the system's going to cost us on our end, and they still don't have a number for us.
That's excellent. Thank you, gentlemen.
Any other questions? Thank you. Laura, any more to budget, any more?
All right, so in conclusion, so our, our total operating expense budget, which includes everything except for utilities, landfill, water treatment plant, and it's for 2023, it's 22 million, or just about 22,100. So then we've taken out what would be included as, so our grants, conditional grants, fee revenue, any interest, reserves, internal transfers, any other revenue that's coming in. So then your bottom line is 12.7 million, and that's what we need to bring in from taxes if we're going to have that as our expenses because we don't have any, we don't have any other source of revenue, basically. So taxes are it. So, because our taxes are established based on our mill rates and how properties are assessed, and then we have our base tax calculation on our fire, police, and snow and sand services. So with that, we have, we, our initial budget comes in at 10.34% increase in our expenses. So that is a $991,988 increase in tax revenue that we would have to bring in. This breaks down what each department, what their increase is, and if they don't have fees that have increased or getting like an internal loan or transfer, have put money away in reserves for it. This shows what each department impact would be on taxes. So how are our taxes are calculated? So we have taxes calculated for emergency services through our base tax, which I had talked about. We also have emergency services on the mill rate, so that would go to everybody except for residential and condominiums. So they would make up the rest of the emergency services portion, and then we have our general mill rate for general operations, and that would be divvied up amongst everybody. So that's how we come up with our 991,000. So this, with this current increase and based on what our emergency services is, it'd be a $90 increase in base tax. So with that, obviously, this is our preliminary budget. We've cut a lot of ass. We, we've tried to get it down to what we really need, but a 10.34% increase is likely not feasible. So we put it out there to, for input on what people like to see and want to see within the city. So we have, the public have the opportunity to give their feedback on what we have proposed, and council, I guess, too.
So, Your Worship, all's walked through, just the steps for the public. It's really important for us to receive feedback. This is, this is a really good process, and it's really good for us to receive, you know, what the community wants to see. So starting tomorrow, we'll start to do a public input session, and that'll go from October 25th to November 18th. So opportunity will be, provide feedback through an online forum, and I'll talk about that on the next slide. Once we have all of those inputs reportedly brought back to council, and that'll be our November 28th council meeting for us to discuss, you know, what kind of feedback we received from the public. At that time, if someone does want to attend, they can appear as a delegation. They just have to get ahold of City Clerk Richter in advance about that and to let us know. And when would you need to know about that, Donette, for them to attend?
The Wednesday prior to the November 20, sorry, the Wednesday prior to the November 28th meeting, which would be, sorry, I don't have my calendar in front of me, so that they would need to let us know later than, I guess, November 23rd, we would have to receive their information that they were wishing to present at the very latest.
Thank you, Donette. And then after that, we'll bring back those comments, and then we'll come back with final budget on December 12th for approval from council. So we're hoping that we get some more feedback from people, and we also have feedback from council on the 20th as well as we move forward. So if we just move on to the next slide, it goes back to where our, where you can provide input. So Paige Temple, our communication coordinator, has done a lot of great work, one, for the presentation tonight, and two, with getting us ready for public input. She's done a lot of work to the website. So we have a website set up at www.waverne.ca/budget, and so that's where you can receive information on the presentation tonight that'll be put online tomorrow, and also all the information we discussed. And then also, when people want to provide their comments, they can go to budget@waverne.ca to provide information to us. So we do encourage the public to reach out, provide comments on what you've seen within the budget, and really, we want that feedback. It's really important for us, as a municipality, to receive that. One thing I do want to end off with our presentation, I do want to thank all my departments. They put a lot of hard work into what we do for long-term planning, into what we're doing for our operations, so I do want to thank them for that. I also want to thank Laura for all the work she's done in budget, preparing ourselves, and also the work that Paige has done preparing all this stuff for input.
We just have a question, sorry.
Turn your mic on. Mic on.
Sorry, just a question for Laura. Just going back to the increases, like we have, we talked about a $90 increase for base tax, but I wonder if you could clarify what the mill rate increase might be for a household or for a business, aside from the?
So overall, the increase would be like a 10%. So cucking it in, like your base tax would be $90, and then your increase would get you up to like that 10% increase. And so then, like, commercial, all the other would be like 10, 10.3% increase.
So you have an idea what that would be on a, for a household, so?
Oh, for a household, well, it'd be basically 10%, I guess, of what you're paying this year.
Yeah, but you're only paying, remember, if you're $3,000, you're only paying, our portion is only $1,500.
Right. Yeah, so if your, if your municipal taxes are, say, $1,500, it'd be about $150.
Plus the $90.
No, so the 90 would be included, and then you'd have.
Right, that's what I thought, so $20. Okay, yeah.
$10 a month.
Yeah.
$10 a month. Okay, go ahead.
I didn't have a call.
Oh, I didn't, okay.
This is one of the times when my math is all right.
Yeah, well, that's amazing. Yeah, I also wanted, I want to really thank both Matthew for leading out and all the people involved in this. This is one of the first times that we've done, I've been here, this is sixth year, and this is the first time we've done a very open one. It's very good, and it's not a chastise to the public, don't get it wrong, but this is your opportunity. So many times, people say they do not have an opportunity to speak out about this, and nobody listens. You have now got the opportunity to send in all your comments you want, to come as delegates and talk about this, about our budget. This is your opportunity. Take hold of your opportunity. Our manager has provided us a really good, you have a really good opportunity to do it. This is what it is. There it is. Come to the, put in the comments, come to the meeting, and show what, how our democratic system works. We're open, and that's what we're trying to, we're striving for transparency here at the city level. This is what it is. On to there. I hope that didn't sound like chastised to them, but that's what it is, anyway. Go ahead. Any other comments? If there's nothing more than that, thank you again for all the hard work. Really, this was a lot of hard work, and it's really good. Inquiries and announcements. Go ahead.
Thank you, Worship. Long-winded tonight, so everybody kick back. I am pleased, I'm going to be representing the city in the annual jail and bail being put on by Pet Value. I will be caged tomorrow night from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., so feel free to bring me tea or a donation to the Waverne Humane Society, and I would really appreciate all the support that the community can give. Commune-thon is this Friday, October the 28th, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. at the Waverne Legion. Head down again to that Waverne Legion, or tune in on Access Now from your couch, or you can download the Access Now app. And last but not least, the library book sale is being held November 3rd to the 5th. You can drop off your donations at the library until November the 2nd. And 9:30, bright and early on November the 3rd, you can start coming in and stocking up on your books for the winter, and we will have the fill a box or a bag for $10 on Saturday.
Matthew?
I just have one last plug for the Queen's Jubilee Medal. So October 31st is our deadline. I know I've talked about this in our meetings, but I do highly encourage residents to get their names in. Information's on our website under Queen Elizabeth, and so you'll be able to find that information on there, but I do encourage people to get their applications in. Deadline is October 31st.
Mr. Jackie first. Go ahead.
How much is it going to take to get you out of jail?
I don't know, you'll have to discuss that with the Humane Society.
All right.
I think a better question is, how much is Cory prepared to pay to keep you there for a while? Nope, zero. Okay. Well played. Well played. I think the only thing I had left to say is to wish our mayor happy birthday. It's his birthday today. He said we could give him the bumps once we go off air, so you'll get to see.
Happy 59th birthday, Mayor Roy.
The, the other, the other thing that I would like to say is, and plug for the, all the Catholic contingent here, on your Commune-thon that Friday, they're having a big program and capitol thing there starting at noon, I guess 11:30 it starts now, does it? 11 to 7, so 11:30 to 7, so that is very important. I don't, I believe, Matthew, I believe that they've released it already about the Halloween placement, haven't they? Or where the Halloween's going to be, the spook house is going to be? Have they?
Your Worship, you asked the wrong person. That stuff scares me.
But I think, I think that they, but me?
Isn't it Mayhem Manor?
Yeah, Mayhem Manor, but I think they've released it already, so I can say it here on that, that, because people have already told me that they wanted to really thank the city because the city has graciously opened up Heritage Village this year to Mayhem Manor. What a spooky place that will be on there. That's, yeah, that's it, Matthew. And also, too, just, and I don't know who these people are who's doing the ghost tours, but I think that's really, that people have really gotten into the spirit here. The spirit. I didn't mean it that way, but I mean, but they've really got into the spirit of Halloween because there's somebody, there's another website, Spooky Waverne, and then they're going around, they're giving ghost tours all through, I think, the 28th to the 31st, all the ghost houses that are supposed to be in Waverne, haunted places in Waverne. Do you know? Go ahead, Laura.
Thank you, Worship. One more thing in staying with Halloween, Pumpkin Lane is being put on by the Tourism Committee or the Tourism Office here in Waverne. So if you're looking for something family-friendly on Saturday before you hit Mayhem Manor, head on over, oh, waverntourism.com, and they will have all the details. I just know that Pumpkin Lane is going to be really exciting this year.
So, so there's all the, and Halloween will be out there. With that, any other announcements? Nothing more. So, but again, thank you to the city for allowing this. People are very excited about that they're allowed heritage there, so. There's no notice more motions. So with that, I'll call this meeting to adjournment.